Good afternoon, welcome to the meeting of council, January 29th, 2019. We will have a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda?
I have a motion that is moved by councillor Perrier, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of January 29th, 2019 as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous? Any declaration of pecuniary interest? Patrick?
Yep, for item bylaw nineteen dash zero one one, I am an employee of that company and I'm going to abstain from voting on that issue.
Okay, duly noted. Yes?
I'm not realizing it, I guess I'm also an employee that, of Kirkland Gold too, so I probably should step down.
Okay, duly noted. There's no monetary decision in this, but, so you'll be able to remain in the room? Petitions and delegations? Melanie Dubey? No, not Dubey. Dub-
Hi, I'm sorry. I'm here for a request for the Kirkland Lake Aquatic Club, the Stingrays. The club would like to ask the town to give the permission to have a visual space in the pool for a lighting sponsorship. Usually, in the past, in the whole pool, we always had a sponsorship wall that was negotiated with the pool. Since the new pool, we tried in the past to talk with the town and see if there was opportunity to have also a space in the pool to highlight sponsor and donation from the town. The conclusions were never given, so this year, at the beginning of the season, CLAC did the sponsorship as usual, and we had really a low response from the company, from the business in town and everyone, and they were all saying to us that they have no interest in giving to the club because there is nothing for them to be really recognized and that we can see that they are part of the Stingrays. So we asked if it's possible to have a space where we can put that the Kirkland Lake Aquatic Center is the home of the Stingrays and where we can maybe highlights those donations and sponsor in the future.
So Melanie, you're looking for, there's a maximum amount of billing, is that correct?
Yeah.
Eight hundred dollars?
Yes.
What would the normal bill run you?
What do you mean?
The normal cost that you would have been paying.
Usually, in the past, it was around between six hundred and eight hundred dollars that we were giving to the town.
So you want to cap it at eight hundred?
Yes, because Kirkland Lake, the Stingrays are a nonprofit organization and it's really for the kids in the town, and we keep having higher costs for rental of the pool. And difference of like minor hockey or things like that, the cost of a coach is really expensive in swimming. So all this needs to be in, in the mind of what Stingrays are. They are in the town for forty years now, and it's really a competitive swim club that brings some young kids from this town to university, to provincial, even for trial of Olympic. So with all that, we want to keep this club in the town, but without sponsor, it would be really hard.
Councillor comments, questions? We, yes, councillor Owen?
Yeah, I just wanted to commend the Stingrays on providing an excellent program. I know my oldest son, Richard, was in the program many years ago, and I know you've hired a very competent coach, and you've had a competent coach, and in recent years, we've seen, we've seen a lot more swimmers get scholarships than hockey players. And I meant to go to the complex today, but I had to go to the town. I, I think that because you had that sponsorship in the, in the old pool, and it was easy to do in the old pool because there was that wall, I'd like to see us find some way to, to accommodate the club because you're providing a great recreational time for young people, and there's also a recreational site. There's a, there's a high level competition and then your club also has a more recreational type swimming, so it accommodates a wide range, and I think we should do what we can to keep it going.
Thank you.
I concur with councillor Owen and congratulate your group of forty years of providing this to the public, our younger children and children growing up. Certainly have had some great success. I would support what you're asking for. I think we, are we bringing that back up? Any further discussion?
So I have a resolution that is moved by councillor Perrier, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. The council approves the request from the Kirkland Lake Aquatic Club to rent the Aquatic Center sponsorship board at a cost of ten percent up to eight hundred dollars per year. It was per year, is that right?
All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Keep up the great work.
Thanks.
Acceptance of the minutes?
It's moved by councillor Perrier, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. The council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The Kirkland Lake Library Board held December thirteenth, 2018. The special meeting of council held January fifteenth, 2019. The regular meeting of council held January fifteenth, 2019. The museum advisory committee held January sixteenth, 2019.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, passed? Reports of municipal officers and communications? Museum of Northern History curator and administrator, Caitlin?
Yeah, it's, it should be a bright green, is it?
Could you introduce your- Okay, thank you. Councillor Owen?
Thanks Caitlin. I'm just wondering, how many staff are we talking, and do you have an approximate cost of what, what this is going to cost us for the staff and the shipping with the real cost? This ballpark figure?
Yeah, so this will be a partnership between the museum as well as the centennial committee, so we will be sending one staff as well as most likely a member of the centennial committee. We don't have a exact number at the moment, we expect it to come under a thousand dollars and it will be mostly for my next visit, the travel costs, and it will be a one day plan.
So Caitlin, if I'm understanding this correctly, you're putting this in the 2019 budget?
Yeah.
Which we're working on. Any further comments, questions?
And that was just information.
Okay. Museum Canada Cultural Spaces Fund?
Thank you, just gonna keep those warm fuzzy feelings for the museum going on here for the next two possible funding opportunities that will benefit the museum and therefore the town of Kirkland Lake. The first is the Canada Cultural Spaces Fund, so just give you a little background, I know you've already read the, the report, but for those in the audience who haven't. A few years ago, the museum had some renovations done to its heating system to update it, and unfortunately, this meant there was also some renovations that had to be done to the basement, which is where we store a lot of our artifacts when they're not on display. There was some shelving that unfortunately could not be salvaged as a result of it, and we also lost one of the original storage rooms. So as a result, we are trying to work around that and have new shelving installed, and essentially, we are looking into having something called mobile shelving, which essentially is racks of shelves that are on tracks, and you can move them, so that way they are not stationary, and it creates additional space in the storage areas, and it can increase, increase storage by as much as forty-three percent. And we are anticipating there will be, every year we receive quite a few artifacts to include in our, in our collections, and with the centennial coming up and a lot of former Kirkland Lakers coming home, we believe there will be more artifacts that are dropped off, and the idea is to allow us to continue to take in artifacts over the next ten to twenty years, and the sort of shelving unit will assist that. And they don't come cheap, they are, are over six thousand dollars. However, there are grants that are available, so that's where the Canada Cultural Spaces Fund comes in, and it is actually a federal grant, and what they do is they cover up to fifty percent of the expenses. So as you can see where it says total cost, right below that, there's a breakdown of the expenses. We would be asking the cultural, Canada Cultural Spaces Fund for three thousand and fifty dollars, and for the three thousand dollars, that would come from a one-time donation that was made to the museum in relating to preservation projects, and the remaining amount actually is covered by our operating budget, so that would cover the cost of labor for the installation of the mobile shelving.
Have we attended this in the past?
We have not applied, as far as I know, the museum has not applied for this funding in the past. When I spoke to Andrew Elghe, he is the program officer for this, he mentioned that they would cover, as I say, up to a maximum of fifty percent, and usually the projects they cover are like two hundred thousand dollars, something much larger than what we're asking for. So I think that works in our favor that we're asking for a smaller amount than if we were, say, asking for a larger amount, because there is only a certain amount of money in that pot that, that can be dispersed amongst various museums and archives and other facilities that would be asking for the funds.
Wolf, do you have any comments in regards to those grants?
I think that it is something that is worthwhile pursuing. One of the issues is the fact that after the renovations were made, some of those artifacts are sitting in a place that's not ideal, and they have to be moved back. The fact that they are mobile units is to the town's benefit as well if, you know, if we have to consider storage off-site for whatever reason during renovations or anything in the future. So I think that it would be a good investment. At fifty percent, that's more than you usually get for arts and culture, so that's good.
Councillor?
I'm asking for a little less because I think it'll improve our odds. The last you're asking, when I speak with Andrew, he mentioned that, as I say, as long as it's fifty or under, but if it's a little under that, then it's even better. If we were only asking for thirty percent, I think we'd probably have like a ninety-nine percent chance of getting the funding, even though it is a very competitive basis. But I, I figure by lowering it down to, in the forty, forty percent area, that we're going to do a little better. It's not a hundred percent, but-
I think it's a good approach. And then we'd be looking at roughly just under eight hundred dollars if these grants do come through in the budget.
Yes, which comes out of our, as I mentioned, our regular operating budget, so we already have staff that come in.
The facilities and interior maintenance manager for the complex facilitates a lot of our maintenance products to the museum as well, so we pay for roughly eight hours of service through shoveling and various other tasks that would be part of our maintenance program.
Okay, that's for information purposes only at this point, thank you. Museum Community Stories Investment Program?
Okay, so this is even better. This one is actually a hundred percent coverage for expenses. So for this project, Community Stories Investment Program used to be known as Community Memories, and the museum has applied, as well as Hockey Heritage North, applied for funding through this organization previously, through this investment program, unlike the Canada Cultural Spaces Fund where it's a grant. This is actually a contract that is entered in with the Virtual Museums of Canada. So what they do essentially is, as a summary, is they will provide you a hundred percent of the funding for your project, and you have to meet specific deadlines according to that, and then the online exhibit that will be created from this will be posted by them, and then a link is given to your website, so that way you don't have to worry about eating up all your server space, it's on another server, and you just have access to it on your website, or that's the only place you need to have the link, is on your website, and then other people can access that, that exhibit. So the, as I mentioned, the amount would be a hundred percent covered through this, and it would be for fifteen thousand dollars, that's the maximum. The previous Community Memory projects that created the other virtual exhibits that we currently have accessible online, they average from three thousand, sorry, two thousand five hundred to five thousand dollars. The reason why there's such a large jump in the expense, or sorry, in the amount that they are giving for this project is because a requirement is to make the exhibit bilingual, and in addition to making our collection and exhibits accessible online for a wider audience, part of the museum's strategic planning for future years is to make more of its content bilingual, so we can make it accessible to our Francophone community as well, and for French audiences online. So there is a breakdown again of expenses, of what may happen with this project. At this point, nothing is set in stone. Lot of the expenses when it comes to software and equipment is photography, digitization, scanning, that sort of equipment, not so much laptops or computers anymore, which unfortunately they no longer cover the expense for. At this point, these are just, as I say, rough estimates. The eight thousand dollars for the preparation of the project, a lot of that will be going directly to translation costs. Unfortunately, I am not bilingual, Caitlin is, however, this would be quite a large project to have staff in-house work on, so that's why there's the extra expense there. And for the five hundred and fifty dollars, that is, I'm probably lowballing that a bit, but that is for the exhibit marketing and different promotion for the exhibit prior to it being online and once it is online. And I've been skirting around the, the whole issue of what the exhibit's actually about, but it is about the centennial, and its main theme and focus actually is going to be on the past hundred years of immigration to Kirkland Lake. So it's not something that will focus just on one aspect of our, of our history, but instead, it covers the full hundred years as we continue to have people come here from all over the world, either for work or for other reasons to come to Kirkland Lake, and we want to explore those stories. So there will be a physical exhibit in place, as Caitlin mentioned earlier, our centennial exhibit, and that will have, it will touch on the theme of immigration in it as well, and the idea is to take that one section of the exhibit and expound on it, and to have a virtual exhibit based on it, and there will be additional content coming in, we are hoping over the course of the summer, so we can use that for this exhibit, so there can be video and audio content be included, which we may not have necessarily for the physical exhibit.
Any comments or questions? Councillor White?
Would this project occur without the funding? Not anytime soon. As I mentioned, when it comes to the cost of translation, that alone would eat up about half of the money that they would be providing, and it would take, we probably have to increase our budget, budget over the next few years if we were to try and do this in-house.
No further comments, questions? Caitlin, Kelly, good presentation, thank you for the information, and we'll work on this. Thank you. CAO?
The next item is a housekeeping item, the authorization to sign checks for both the town of Kirkland Lake and Tech Pioneer. This is passed as we do have changes in personnel, and it reflects what the current lineup is.
It's moved by councillor Perrier, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. The council approves the town's signing authority policy dated January 29th, 2019 as presented by the chief administrative officer.
All in favor? Unanimous? Emergency response plan bylaw?
If you don't mind, I'll take this one for Rob Adair, he's not here tonight. The, every municipality is required to have an emergency response plan, as you can probably recall from 2012, comes in handy. In 2012, everything functioned fairly smoothly, there were some lessons learned both by municipality as well as other lessons that were imported from other crises around the province. In, we were required every year to check it, update it, make sure it was good. That did happen until roughly 2017, when we started going through a number of personnel changes, so we fell behind the ball. Thanks to Rob and to Renzo Rado, the plan has been brought back up to the standards as required by the province. We have had visits from the province, the emergency management group, reviewing it, making sure that everything is in order. This now has been brought forward, this particular bylaw. What it will do is replace, there were two, I think, two individual bylaws in the past. The bylaws in the past were not up to the current standards, insofar as, we're just one example, they did identify individuals, as opposed to the current practices to identify positions for, that would be sitting and participating in the emergency management committee and group. So that bylaw is before you, it is fairly comprehensive. That also is by intent, because as anything relevant to the bylaw changes, we review the plan and every other aspect of the bylaw that is attuned to it, and that would, any changes would then be brought forward to council for council's approval, as well as knowledge. The plan itself was reviewed, I guess it was in December, and we held a tabletop exercise. Long-term plans are to make all council more aware of the plan, hopefully to participate at least as observers in some of the tabletop exercises, and to get, if you want to say, to get your hands wet as to how this proceeds. I think that they've, they've done a very good job, again, kudos to them. We're back to where we should be, and I think that we're at least ready for whatever the springtime could bring us.
Yes, thanks Wolf. I was one of the attendees, actually, I guess, well, to declare emergency has to be done by the mayor. In the absence of the mayor, I've appointed councillor White as the backup person, and she's accepted. The exercise was extremely interesting and very real, and we'll be doing more of that throughout the year. So I agree with you, Renzo and Rob, the fire chief, did an excellent job putting this together. We'll bring it back as- Oh, sorry? Rick or Patrick?
You talked about some of the amendments that were made, so what were they? I saw there's amendments paid on page nine. Amendments, what were they? Page nine? Says emergency response plan amendments.
Let me get back in my memories here and see if I can recall exactly what. I think that that was with the, and I'd have to confirm with Rob, but that was presenting the updated plan to the province and having it reviewed, and noting that it was reviewed as such. It's, the plan itself is very much a template that is being used throughout the province, but we did have to, I think, address, I think it was the HIRA, the, oh, what's the proper acronym for that? It's infrastructure-related risks in the community, and you had to identify three or four, I guess, ones, and I think that that indicates that that was presented to the province and responded to.
So for plans, I know I've mentioned it during the snow removal, if we can do something similar like this, and have like what was amended, right, so it would be like section, this was amended, right, and that way we can know right away where to go to?
That, that's right, and I think you'll see that when we talk about the waste bylaw, they did put that in. That is the process as we go forward from now on. For the emergency plan as well, one of the problems we had in the past was, an amendment was made and everybody had a binder and didn't necessarily show up in their binder, and then you were going, what we're doing at this point is, it will be put online, and amendments will be made to that. There will be a, a library of the plans in binders at the emergency centers that can be rolled out, but it's easier for us to update, as well as for our community partners to see it and follow it. There will also be under the new website, a page dedicated to emergency planning and There will also be under the new website, a page dedicated to emergency planning and preparation that will have some training materials for the public, some public activities as well as key parts of the plan for people to respond to.
It'll be coming back as a bylaw? Treasurer's report? The 2019 audit planning report? Welcome to, as the new interim treasurer, Sherry?
I just want to address two parts that were also in the report that Sherry did talk about to a certain extent. One is they mentioned staff turnover and associate risk of reporting failure. Okay, I want to reassure council that the corporation is on top of its reporting requirements. In October, we commissioned Sherry to exactly look and review all that to make sure that what we had to do was being done. Yes, we found some issues, but we also were able to solve them and we are where we're supposed to be with that. So kudos to Sherry, but she got us out of the fire. The other one is with the collectibles taxes. You'll notice that, well, you recall that in 2017, 2018, the corporation made fairly significant progress in bringing down those numbers. So that will be reflected. At the same time, we do have to go through the books and make sure that we know whatever else is out there and that's where it will be reported. It will be an improvement from what it was in 2016, 2015, even 2017, but please do not fool yourselves that we're out of the woods either. There's other things out there and we'll, we'll report them as they come through. I think that should be it.
Sherry, could you, for the benefit of council and the public, under materiality, the paragraph, second paragraph, our materiality is the current audit is $600,000. Could you just briefly explain the coles notes?
What I would say is, I don't know the great psychology, but what I can tell you is Sherry's going to be based on what that, that 2% of the revenue for my expenses, I mean, considering the town, I'm probably, probably, I don't know.
Any further questions, comments? We certainly appreciate you getting 2018 cleaned up. It was getting, we were getting a little nervous. I can feel confident that as we work on the 2019 budget, that we're working with valid figures or correct figures, I should say. So thanks, Sherry.
It's moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The council accepts the Grant Thornton's 2018 Audit Planning Strategy as presented by the town treasurer.
All in favor?
So this is a request that has been sent to council from the National Eating Disorder Information Center. And they are asking for council to help bring awareness to their, their campaign, which is to draw attention to the causes, the prevalence and the impact of eating disorders. And they're asking for council to recognize the week of February 1st to 7th for them. So I have a resolution.
Any comments or discussion? None?
It's moved by Counselor Owens, Rick Owens, seconded, Owen, sorry. Seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The council declares February 1st to 7th, 2019, as Eating Disorder Awareness Week in and for the Town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Unanimous, carried? Timiskaming Shores Resolution, two plus one highway pilot project?
Okay, I just wanted to bring up the diagram just to show this. Of course, it's, it's sideways. But this is a resolution that's come from Timiskaming Shores. They're asking for the Town of Kirkland Lake to support their petition to the province for a two plus one highway pilot project somewhere in Northern Ontario on Highway 11 between North Bay and Cochrane. So what this is, is it's three lanes of traffic, which is already there existing in most places. And it just, the lane switches about every two kilometers so that one lane of traffic has, has two lanes, the other one going in the other direction has one lane and then it switches back every, every couple kilometers. There are safety benefits to this road system and what, what the thought is, is that these, the road base already exists and the benefit to towns is that these roadways don't bypass towns, they go through towns and then, then the drivers know that it comes back out to this three lane highway. This is not the first time this has come up. This has come up probably 2015, 2016. It's an initiative that the councils of the north have been doing. The background or information that is attached does come from that 2016 petition that went around. Highway maintenance plans, they're prepared years in advance. And so Mayor Carmen Kidd from Timiskaming Shores is taking the lead and he's petitioning the MTO to have a look at this and he wants to keep on bringing it forth until they actually recognize it and hopefully do something with it with their next phase of planning. So they are just asking for Kirkland Lake to support them.
I recall this subject coming up at Timiskaming Municipal Association and a little bit of history. They use this method in Europe and it's been highly successful. Reduces accidents, especially with the number of transport accidents we've had over the past two years, some of them fatal, and they seem to be on the increase. This would certainly reduce some of the accidents and be a lot safer. And that was the reason for this being processed. I think it's a good idea. Any further comments? Counselor Owen?
I know Timiskaming Shores has been pushing this for a while and I think it's a, it's a dual project in that, you know, the province runs on numbers and we don't have the numbers on Highway 11 to justify four laning. And considering the current level of debt of the province, that further hinders any chance of four laning. This project could be done for a lot less money. And I must admit that when I first heard about this project a number of years ago, I was skeptical that it would work. But the statistics from, from Europe show that this is highly effective in reducing accidents. And I think with all the transports we have on the road now, as companies seem to be using transports rather than rail, I think this is a very important thing that we should support and I think it'd be good for Kirkland Lake and all our residents.
Thank you, Counselor Owen. I certainly agree with you on that. Any further comments?
It's moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The council of the Town of Kirkland Lake supports the council of the city of Timiskaming Shores in its petition to the province of Ontario to develop a pilot project involving a two plus one roads program somewhere between North Bay and Cochrane.
All in favor? Ashley, manager of planning and land development? Richard?
Afternoon, everybody.
Sorry about that.
My first report to you is, you're probably thinking, why is he bringing that to us now? Well, it was an interesting fall. There was not too many council meetings. December was full of other priorities and this is information that staff feels that council should know. Although the 2018 spring and fall tipping fee events, we had an event in the, in the spring, we also had an event in the fall. This report here will summarize the cost of having the event, landfill tipping fee reductions, the cost of additional staffing for four hours on two Sundays. Give you a little preamble on the hazardous waste event that we hold, we've held on Archer Drive and the cost associated with that. And for the most part, it's to give you an idea for when we come in the near future to ask for these events again in 2019 for transparency. Any questions?
Richard, comparing the lost revenue as compared to what, when we used to do the cleanup weeks, there's a significant cost to cleanup weeks. Do you recall roughly, was it?
I, I do and you know, that, that may be coming in the future as well. Curbside, bulky curbside spring cleaning, as you, as we traditionally called it, a lot of you remember that? That came in at around $60,000 and it took about, we'd put it down for six days, sometimes with extenuating circumstances and different things, it would take eight days to complete. But it came in between in-house staff and hired equipment, it would come in at around $60,000 bucks to complete that. So they moved to having the free tippings because it was cost prohibited to do this every year. At one point in time, council suggested that maybe we could do it bi-yearly, every two years. The last one was in 2015 and it's kind of been shelved ever since. Financial constraints with the municipality, other priorities become in, these free tipping weeks in the spring and the fall are favorable among the residents and they, they're well received. But we do have a, a lot of inquiries about the bulky curbside as well. That'll be a discussion for, for a different meeting in the future.
Yep. Thank you. Any further comments, questions? Counselor White?
Sorry, looking at the numbers, it does appear that there has been a decrease of